Jesus, you gather us together and by the power of the Holy Spirit, you come among us in such a way that we would know it. We ask you, dear Lord, that you would open us up to your presence with us now and with us every day. With us now in the mountaintop experiences of the places where you locate yourself for us and out on the plane and in the valleys of our lives, so we would know that it's you mature us to detect your presence all along the way, that every day would bring us a hallelujah. In your name we pray and begin. Amen. So Kevin taught last week first article of the creed and you are all geniuses now based on what he taught you. Is that true? Praise God. And, and, and so what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is go on. Y'all okay with that? We're gonna go on then to the second article of the creed and the meaning. Second article of the creed and its meaning. So if you find that in the explanation section of your catechism, whatever page it's on. Mine is on page 119. What page is it in yours? 1:1? Did you? Is everybody there? All of you who are around those who are lost, help them get found, will you please? It is the role of brothers and sisters in Christ in the church for one another, right? So what I'd like to do is have us all read the second article of the creed together and then I'll do the pastor part, the words in italics, and then you proclaim altogether, what does this mean, right? So here we go. You ready? "I believe in Jesus Christ, His only Son, our Lord, who was conceived by the Holy Spirit, born of the Virgin Mary, suffered under Pontius Pilate, was crucified, died, and was buried. He descended into hell. The third day he rose again from the dead. He ascended into heaven and sits at the right hand of God, the Father Almighty. From thence he will come to judge the living and the dead." What does this mean? "I believe that Jesus Christ, true God, begotten of the Father from eternity, and also true man, born of the Virgin Mary, is my Lord, who has redeemed me, a lost and condemned person, purchased and won me from all sins, from death and from the power of the devil, not with gold or silver, but with His holy precious blood and with His innocent suffering and death, that I may be His own and live under Him in His kingdom and serve Him in everlasting righteousness, innocence, and blessedness, just as He is risen from the dead, lives and reigns to all eternity." This is most certainly true. Well done. Well, I got a long way to go. I'm done. I don't have any more words. And so, and so I'd like to say, I'd like to have a little bit of a conversation before we dive into the specifics of the catechism. There is this awesome image in the creed of Jesus as my redeemer. Redeemer. What does the word redeemer mean? Redeemer. The work of Jesus is that He is my redeemer. He has bought us back, right? He saved us. He bought us back. So have you ever heard of something called the redemption center? Do they do that in Illinois still? Huh? S&amp;H Green Stamps. Praise God. S&amp;H Green Stamps. Yes. And so what was the concept of S&amp;H? That's not still a thing, is it? Awesome. So the other thing that you see connected to redemption in a worldly kind of image is that redemption centers used to be places where you would take aluminum cans. Right? They're, they're now empty and worthless and they're garbage. Go pick them up and take them to the redemption center and we'll give you, what was it? Nickel? Right? Huh? It's been a while since you did it. Two cents. Two cents, maybe 10 cents if it was, if it was somewhere other than Illinois. Sorry, that was supposed to be plenty. And so here's the thing, right? Here's the thing. We had this definition of buy something back, right? There's this concept of something has been made worthless, garbage. Right? Garbage. God, I'm sorry. Almighty God takes it and by paying a price for it, He makes it worth again. Right? In the Old Testament, there was this concept called the kinsman redeemer. Anybody ever heard of that concept? Kinsman redeemer. What was the concept of kinsman redeemer? Anybody know? Yes. Wait a minute. You can keep that and then run around the room if you're gonna talk.
Wait a minute.
We can have Sarah do it. The hype girl for the church, apparently.
The kinsman redeemer, tie it to the story of Ruth and Boaz. When a woman's husband would die, a kinsman, a relative of the deceased, would take on the role and bring her into his household to buy her back from poverty because a woman without a husband and without children was sentenced essentially to die.
No resources, no assets, no way forward, right? And so a kinsman redeemer, somebody in the family line, who would then pay, receive, bring into the family, right? And so it's from those images that the work of Jesus, when it comes to the second article of the creed, is called the redeemer. Right? Our redeemer, right? It's what he's doing. It's what he's about. And so as we read, as we read the second article of the creed, it's about our redemption. The next thing that I would point you to in a more global kind of way as we dive into the words and phrases is I would ask you, I would ask you to put a little line in all of your catechisms, but I'm gonna ask you first where the line goes. There is a concept in our wonderful Lutheran theology called the Savior in the state of humiliation and the Savior in the state of exaltation. When you put those two words together, humiliation and exaltation, what are we talking about? Humiliation. If Jesus is in a state of humiliation, what's that mean? St. Paul in Philippians, chapter 2. In the guise of Pastor Tom, right? In the guise of Pastor Tom, right? Right? Open your Bibles if you would to Philippians, chapter 2, that he said does humiliation and human, those two parts of who he is, those two things go together, right? Yeah, I think so. And... So let's begin at verse 5. Philippians, chapter 2. Philippians, chapter 2, verses 5 and following on a read. And, and, and I wanna ask you, when, what part of this is humiliation? And what part of this is exaltation, right? Think humility and exalted power. Those two opposites, all in the bag of bones that Jesus is walking around in. Okay? And so in verse 5, it says, "Your attitude, your attitude should be the same as that of Christ Jesus, who being in the very nature God." Is that humiliation or exaltation? Philippians, chapter 2. Philippians, chapter 2, verse 5. "Your attitude should be the same as that of Christ Jesus, who being in the very nature God." Exaltation, right? Exaltation. Almighty God Himself. "Did not consider equality with God, something to be grabbed onto and held onto and used to His advantage." It's what's wrapped up in that phrase. "But instead, for your sake, made Himself nothing." This is where transition takes place from exaltation. "He chose, in His power, to make Himself nothing." The nothing part of the phrase is where we begin humiliation. "He humbled Himself," right? "He humbled Himself with you in mind, made Himself nothing, taking on the very nature of a servant, being made in human likeness, being found in appearance as a man. He humbled Himself and became obedient to death, even death on a cross." All of that humiliation, all of it, right? All of it. He humbled Himself for you. Humbled Himself for you. Therefore... Notice this. Therefore, the Father, therefore, the Father exalted him, raised him from the dead, welcomed him back to be seated at the right hand of the Father, where he reigns and rules his church in love, right? "He exalted him to the highest place and gave him the name that is above every name, that at the name of Jesus every knee should bow, in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father." Exaltation, right? You get the, you get the image? Get the image? Now go back to the creed. Go back to the creed. And I wanna know where we're gonna, I want you to tell me where we're gonna draw this line. It begins in humiliation. It ends in exaltation. It begins with him humbling himself and taking on flesh and then it ends in resurrection power and the return, right? So where am I gonna draw this line where it transitions from humiliation to exaltation? "I believe in Jesus Christ, His only Son, our Lord, who was conceived by the Holy Spirit, born of the Virgin Mary, suffered under Pontius Pilate, crucified, died, was buried. He descended into hell. The third day he rose again from the dead. He ascended into heaven and sits at the right hand of God, the Father Almighty. From there, he will come to judge the living and the dead." Where are you gonna draw your line? Some said the third day. Some would say after the word "buried." So here's what I wanna say to you. Here's, here's what I wanna say to you. Once Jesus said, "It is finished." And once Jesus, He actively willingly gave up His spirit into death, all of the humiliation was done. All of the humiliation was done. So that no matter what happens next, it's all a part of His exaltation. Power. Almighty God. Okay? So His descent into hell is after the suffering is over. He's preaching victory to the spirits who are in prison. And so it is King of kings and Lord of lords, resurrected one, who goes on that journey. Now, I will also tell you that every one of these other phrases have profound and deep overarching support in the Word of God. I'm not, I, I think that there are like three passages that are used to talk about the descent into hell. And so if you ever want to question any phrase in any of the creeds that we believe in, it would probably be, "He descended into hell." But I would just tell you that, that when we get to this place, in my younger days, when I was a little bit more cocky and didn't care if I kept a job. May, may, maybe that was yesterday. I would have said to you that Jesus went and preached to the spirits in prison and it was like nanny, nanny, boo, boo. Right? You tried to kill me, but I am victorious and now I'm gloating over. I don't, I'm not sure that's in the character of who he is. Right? That's not in the character of who he is. But what I wanted to just see right now, as we then back up and go through the phrases, is this idea of humiliation and exaltation, all wrapped up in the same Christ. All wrapped up in the mystery of divinity and humanity in the same bag of bones. Divinity and humanity in the same bag of bones. As you, as you see in the creed, it says, it says, "I believe in Jesus Christ, His only Son, our Lord, who was conceived by the Holy Spirit, born of the Virgin Mary, suffered under Pontius Pilate, was crucified, died, and was buried. He descended into hell. The third day he rose again from the dead and ascended into heaven. He sits at the right hand of God, the Father Almighty. From thence he will come to judge..." It's in the meeting, I'm sorry. Wow, all that was great. What does this mean? "I believe that Jesus Christ, true God." And then later on, it's gonna say, "I believe that Jesus Christ, true man." Wrapped up in the same body, the miracle and the mystery, it's just like the Trinity. The more you try to fathom and understand the depth of the truth behind Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, one God, three persons, the more it will drive you to your knees and to the foot of the cross. The more you try to understand the mystery of Jesus, both God and man at the same time, the more it will drive you to the foot of the cross, crying out to the Father for answers. But let me tell you that in all the mysteries of your life, when it comes to you and God and God's church and God's world and the way that it works and the questions you have about everything from miracles to the identity of Almighty God, the more you come to those places where we come to the end of revelation and you come to the end of the answer for right now and you sit there and you stew on it and you wonder about it, there are two things that work in that moment and in that time. One of those is Satan. "He would love to be able to have you say to yourself, unless you answer my questions and I am satisfied, intellectually with the answer to the question, 'I will not believe,' says Thomas." Also, at war inside your head, your heart, your life, when it comes to mystery. Also at war against what Satan and a fallen bag of bones and a fallen brain that you have and, and I have and when you, when you come to that place, also the Holy Spirit is there. The Holy Spirit is there trying to call, gather, enlighten, and sanctify. He is, He is seeking for you to stand there and to walk by faith. Faith, being certain of what we do not see. Faith, being, being confident about what we do not see and, and confident about, about what we do not experience yet. So here's, here's the, here's what I'm trying to get you to see. My prayer for each one of you is that when you come to the end of your answers, you would stand there as a man of God or a woman of God and you would then say, "Lord, if it's still gonna matter when I get home to you, I'll, I'll ask you about it." And if it's something I can remember through death, out to resurrection and out the other side, and I don't know it just because I'm now redeemed and my brain's been redeemed, then, then when the conversations that you and I have for the rest of eternity, I wanna know. I wanna know about why is there evil? Why do, why the, why do bad things happen to, to what I believe are good people? Why, what is, how in the world, how in the world is there one God, three persons? How is it that you are, 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 are the, at the same time, God and man, 100%? As you wrestle and as you ask the Lord for wisdom around the questions that you have, all I would say to you is remain faithful and don't let it become a stumbling block between you and your ability to be loved and to love the Lord back. Thoughts? Questions? Have you ever wrestled? Am I way off? Do none of the rest of you have these wrestlings? None of you wrestle? So what, what are the questions you wrestle about and you're wondering about that don't seem to be answered in the Word of God, that you're waiting to ask Him when you get there? And, and there are, there are some scholarly biblical answers to this about, about love versus robotic behavior, right? That there are, there are those kinds, but in the emotion and in the moment and among the crises of our lives, sometimes it doesn't answer the question, "Why?" And so we carry it forward. We carry it forward to ask Him when we get home and in the deep washes of the night, we cry out to Him and we ask Him, "Why? What else? What else comes to mind? What else causes you to wonder between you and the Lord? Why, why, why did fleas and gnats make their way onto the ark? And so there's some, just like this, just like David over here, there's some gut level answers, but the question is, why do children have to suffer, right? Like cancer and other kinds of things. There are some gut level answers that feel really cold-blooded when you say them. Just somebody who's crying and in pain because of the event. And, and at the heart of it has to do with, with what David says when he says, "I was sinful from the time my mother conceived me." Right? And so none of us, all of us, all of us are sinful, no matter what age we are and, and we live in a fallen bag of bones and we live in a world where really, really hard things happen. And, and, and Almighty God is, Almighty God is, is trying to get us there. But when you're in the midst of, and you're in the midst of someone that you love very, very much, is hurting and in pain and like a childhood cancer, it's that answer, academic though it may be, it does not heal the scar tissue and the pain of a circumstance like that. So you might carry that on forward with you through life. All I would do is say to you in that place, all I would do is say to you is don't let that become a stumbling block between your, you and your ability to worship the Lord your God. Candy, were you gonna say something? Oh, okay. Okay. Yes, sir. Oh.
I guess I have a mic.
Look out now.
I had basically this, I had basically the same question. And I know that everybody's sinful, but sometimes you see somebody that's trying to help somebody and really what you think is a great thing and they wind up dying in the process.
Yeah.
So it's kind of the same.
Yes. Yes. And one of the things, one of the things to remember just intellectually, while none of you have any of this scar tissue going on in your life. Sorry. Is that this is not heaven. This is a fallen, sinful world that is in the process of returning to the dust. And we as human beings are falling and returning to the dust as well. And we live, every single person on earth is sinful. And so, and so to wish for heaven on earth is going to leave you always helpless and hopeless because that's not what this is. And to have our hopes and our dreams rested on everything going well here is not correct understanding of the generation in which you live and the place in which you live. You live in a fallen world and you live among a sinful people and all of us are in the process of returning to the dust. And so, and so to have your hope fastened here and to wonder why hard things happen to people here is a hope, I think, for heaven to come back here when heaven stays there. And then, and then also I think that, I think that in the midst of the journey, each individual circumstance, each individual circumstance needs to be prayed over and talked about. All of the, all of the pain and the scar tissue you have may be unique to your life experience and your understanding of Almighty God because there's another layer here where you go down and, and you begin to say, "Well, yeah, but aren't you with me, Lord? You promised to be with me and you promised not to let anything happen to me and here it's happened to me and where, where are you? And why did this happen if you loved me?" And, and that gut-wrenching place, you get to this place where you, my hope for you is that you would, in the midst of things you can't understand, you would find comfort and strength in His victory over death and His resurrection out in front of you, where there He will make all things right. And, and the pain that you go through now would not become a barrier to you and your opportunity to worship the Lord. What else comes to mind? Yes, John? Wait.
How is there a devil in the first place? Because there was, with God, there was no beginning and no end. So the devil was, I think, where you ended from. Yes, right? And so he fell away from God.
Yes.
Right? So if after the event, you have all the angels confirmed and they're...
Angelness?
Yes, right, to put it that way. How is it that happened even in the first place?
It's, it's some version, it's some version of exactly how Adam and Eve fell away. Right? Satan, created as an angel of light, falls away from Almighty God. Most would say because of pride or want for power or, or those kinds of things. He falls away and takes other angels with him who also want power, authority, and control, and then they are kicked out of heaven. And I think it's still wrapped up in the difference between robotic... Look, if Paula, she loves this when I do this. If Paula had no choice but to tell me, because she was programmed, but had to tell me every day, "I love you," that probably would end up not meaning as much to me as it does because she has a choice. And then she chooses to love me, both with her words and her actions. I think somewhere in there is part of the genesis of the answer to both the fall of Satan and the fall of mankind. to both the fall of Satan and the fall of mankind. I, I, I think in the midst of that. So as you get to those answers that we have right now, as we see through this, this veil dimly into, into deeper things of God, um, I, I think, uh, that that too becomes an opportunity for us to wonder with Almighty God. Tell me, tell me more about that. I don't, I, I don't understand why that truly is. Um, and so I would join you in that. Um, but I would ask us again, I would ask us again to make sure both for us and for those around us. If you, you could probably think of people who have walked away from the church because of, of barriers that have come up because of pain that they, and crisis that they faced in their life and wondering why, where were you, God, when this happened to me? And why is this, uh, going the way that it's going? And so they have walked away. My hope and my prayer for you is that when you come to these places, that you will understand that you would stand there as a man of God or a woman of God, um, in faith, in faith in Him, based on the truth of the Word of God that says, "I will work all things out for you, God." Um, and then if that concern in that scar tissue makes it from this side to the other, which I don't think it will, uh, we can have conversation about why with Him on the other side. But between now and the day that you get Him home, keep questioning, keep searching, keep going deeper. But continually come at the end of your day to the place where no matter how much more you know, you take your standing, you say, "I love you. I love you, Lord, and I will serve you, even when you don't answer according to the way I want you to. I love you and I will serve you between now and the day that you get me home." Yeah, that, that's the beauty of a passage like, like Paul saying, um, "I planted a polished water", right? You may be the seed planter in a person's life and the fruit may not bear and, and so much later in their life by many other people and many other circumstances along their road. Yeah, thank you. So let's go back. Let's go back now, let's dive in to this journey phrase by phrase. Why, again, why do we say, why do we all get together and say, "I believe"? Right? If you go back to the top of the catechism there where it's second article of the creed, they put it in there again because we started off the creed with this phrase, "I believe". Why do we, why do we all together say, "I believe"? So there is individuality in your faith between you and Almighty God. Look, you don't, you don't get to heaven because your mom and your daddy believe. Right? And so we all stand up together and we make a personal confession, personal profession of our faith in this God, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. "I believe", but when we all say it together, there is power in the corporate unity of taking your stand together. I mean, one of the great things about a national youth gathering, I wish we had a national old people's gathering. What? We. Yes, we do. Uh, 25,000, 25,000 high school youth get together. And one of the things that they experience in that mountain top experience is strength in numbers. They're no longer alone, they're no longer just a part of their small group, right? Right, you guys? Um, and, and you, and you see this and you experience this. Um, well, part of the, part of the challenge of leading God's people into worship and saying a creed every week is to keep you from just throwing words out of your mouth. And to get you to the place where you understand that you are taking your stand individually alongside the great cloud of witnesses. And we are proclaiming what we believe together. And there is strength in those numbers. People across denominational lines around the world, throughout time have believed in the same God that you believe in, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. And when you stand up to proclaim that together, there is power in the unity and the, and the identity and the belonging and the mission and the purpose of all that. And so whenever you, whenever you say, most often the apostles, sometimes the Nicene, uh, very rarely the Athanasian, when you say these creeds, to be able to get yourself in that mindset of being able to say, "I take my stand", that this is what I believe and I believe it alongside brothers and sisters in Christ. And this is who we are. The identity of the God that we believe in and we take our stand, that we are loved by Him and we love Him back. Makes sense? Um, and so "I believe" is, is a huge part of this phrase. I closed it. Why did I close it? Um, okay. "I believe in Jesus Christ." Man, you could take a long time here. Uh, "I believe in Jesus Christ", what does, first of all, it shouldn't be written this way. Frankly, his name is, his last name is not Christ. Right? His, it's not Jesus Allen Christ. Sorry, that's funny. All right. Uh, like Almighty God would give him my middle name. Um, all right, so it, it, it actually should be Jesus the Christ. Jesus, which means what? The Lord saves, right? Jesus, his very name means the Lord saves. His very name means what he was sent to accomplish and what he was sent to do. The Lord saves. What does the word Christ mean? Huh? Anointed, the anointed one. Other words for Christ. Messiah, right? Um, anointed means that, what, well, what does anointed mean? If, if you are anointed, what does it mean? Huh? You are set aside. I'm gonna anoint you and put you in timeout. That's a, that's not what you're talking about, right? I'm gonna anoint you. Um, who was anointed in Old Testament? Think with me. Kings? And they were, and they were set aside to do what? Rule, right? The other thing that they did though is that they were set aside and then they were empowered, emboldened, given the office. Um, and the anointing meant that all the people of God, all the Old Testament covenant people of God, who watched the anointing take place, were gonna come under authority. Come under authority, right? So this anointing and this setting apart has about it this idea of, of you rule, uh, you fill this office, uh, you do what is set for you to do. And we, as your people, your subjects, will hum, humble ourselves before you. Just like any of these, any of these relationships, like master and disciple, right? The master is the leader, the teacher, and the disciple says, "I put myself under your authority to be a lifelong learner before you", right? Um, and, and so there's this, there's this relationship where an anointing of an Old Testament king, all of God's people were there doing their work as well in response to the anointing, the setting apart and the empowering of that person who was going to be king. Um, so, um, Christ, the anointed one, right? Jesus has come to save the world. Um, and the Christ means that he is the anointed one, the one set apart to do the work that his name says. It's kind of like saying Keith, the pastor. Uh, it, it's, um, the word Christ is what he does, set apart and the office that he hold. All right? "I believe in Jesus Christ, God the Father's only son", God the Father's only son. How is Jesus God's only son? Huh? There aren't any others. Um, what is the phrase that's running around in your head right now? Only, begotten, son, right? Um, a- and so, uh, all of us are children of God. Right? You are a child of God, right? You are a child of God, even if you don't believe. You're a child of God whether or not you believe. Um, Almighty God wants to send to you the Holy Spirit so that he calls, gathers, enlightens and sanctifies you to take your place as a loved and loving, uh, child of the King that's doing life together with Him in harmony. Uh, but even before, even in rebellion, the prodigal son was still the son, um, when he was out wanting to eat the pig's food. Um, and so the, the challenge for us, the challenge for us is to realize that, uh, Jesus is set apart for this purpose. Um, the only son of God. And it's gonna talk about his birth more, his conception and his birth more. Um, it also says, "Jesus Christ, his only son, our Lord", what does the word Lord mean? Huh? Boss? Master? Ruler? God? Um, keep going. I'm still waiting for one word. Huh? Leader? How about king? How about king? Jesus is my king. Jesus is my king. Had somebody, uh, leave Hales Corners Lutheran Church because, uh, he said to me, he said to me, "We're Americans. We ain't got no king." What would you have said to him? I didn't have a chance to even say goodbye, but, um, if I would have had a chance and you were me, what would you have said to him? Say more about that, Teresa. Where's the microphone? Do I have it? Man, you two. Sorry, it's him.
We're all strangers here, so this isn't, you know, heaven is our home. We're just here temporarily. So whether you're American or European or whatever you are, first and foremost, you're, you're really just here temporarily.
Yeah. What did he get caught up on? What did he? What, what was the disconnect between him and being able to see what we were talking about when we said, "Jesus is my king"? Yeah, give him, give unto Caesar what is Caesar's and unto God what is God's. Um, I think that at the heart of this stands, uh, an earthly king versus the heavenly king. At the heart of this dichotomy on what he couldn't get into was this idea of me saying that Jesus rules on earth and rules. And so is there any way where Jesus rules on earth? In the heart of his people, he rules. Go ahead, buddy.
I was gonna say, I, I immediately had a reaction to your word, King. I think it's, um, you know, I think it's part of our, our culture, you know?
You know what's in the Bible, right?
I know, but I, but I mean, the thing is, is, is the word itself. I mean, different words, you know, in different cultures, in different times will have different, uh, meanings to you.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
I recently heard something. Out of the 55 people that signed the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence, rather, not the Constitution, out of that 52 were church members and believed in God. And when they, um, wrote up what they, why they were leaving and rebelling against the king was all religious reasons. And that, because they were saying, "We don't believe" and fall under that, uh, earthly king. It's because of our king who is in heaven. And that, and I think a lot of Americans misunderstand our whole history and they identify as being American and oh, that means freedom and I can be who I want to be and do what I want to do. And that's not what the country was designed for.
So what's the difference between, um, what's, there's a, nevermind, I'm not gonna ask you the question. There's a difference between freedom and anarchy. Right? Free to, free to do whatever it is I want. Free to follow whatever it is that I feel versus coming under authority. Because over the authority that's been placed in my life stands the Lord of the church. Right? Stands the Lord of the church and he has said to us, um, that, uh, there will be, there will be greater days in your life if you will follow the authority, the earthly authorities that are around you. And it is he, it is he who rules us, um, as our king. Um, spiritually, he is with us along the way to rule our hearts in love. So that I am not free to just do whatever it is I want. I haven't been forgiven so that I can do whatever it is I want. I have been forgiven so that I would serve him, serve him in love in my life, all my days. So, um, I, I think if you looked at, let me see, over here to the third article of the creed and the meaning, um, then we'll close here. Where's the good grief? Talk about Jesus a lot in this thing. Okay. In the third article of the creed and the meaning, he says, "In the same way he calls, gathers, enlightens and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith, in this Christian church, he daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers. And on the last day, he will raise me and all the dead and give eternal life to me and all believers." So that position of ruling is something that he talks about. Back in the second article of the creed, the last paragraph, it says, "That I may be his own", "that I may be his own", "that I may be his own and live under him", "live under him in his kingdom and serve him in everlasting righteousness, innocence and blessedness." So, um, and, and, um, a- and so as you think about this phrase, "He is my Lord", here's what I would have you ponder over the course of the next week. We say, "Jesus is my Lord and my Savior" all the time, right? It, it kind of flows off the tongue like it goes together often for Lutherans, right? I would say to you that we're all in when it comes to him being my Savior. The life he lived, the death he died, the resurrection that he bought and, and the freedom that is mine in him. But as my Lord, as your Lord, can he tell you to do anything? And expect obedience? So why isn't every single person who has their name on the dotted line saying, "I belong at Trinity"? Why aren't you in worship every Sunday morning? It is a command. It is a command of Almighty God. What? A- a- and so as we, as we pray about this and as we pray about the lordship of Jesus Christ. I think sometimes this idea of he's freed me so I can do whatever it is I want. Wars against. Him being my Lord. And being able to command my life. And it's not just Sunday morning. It's not, it's also Saturday night. No, I'm just kidding. But, uh, it's also Monday through Saturday, right? Um, and so as you pray about this and as you think about this and as you. Uh, devote yourself to it over the course of the next week, I would just ask you. Hopefully that will take you to a place where you're. Kneeling at the foot of the cross and asking for forgiveness and about the priorities of your life and letting him be Lord. Giving him authority in your life with the trust and the promise that his way is everything and more that you ever asked or imagined that it could be. And he will bless you. Let's pray. Dear Father, I ask you that you would be with each one of us. And I ask you that you would. That you would inspire our lives together. And that you would allow us to look deep inside. To see your heart and to see our lives and to see your grace, our redemption and your forgiveness. And the fact that we are bought and paid for. Not with gold or silver, but with your innocent. Suffering and death. Dear Lord, I ask you. That you would allow us to mine the depths of what it means to be bought, paid for and under new management. So that then you can say something to us. And we can joyously respond. So dear Lord, open us up to the journey. Um, and allow us the joy that comes from your redemption. In your name we pray. Amen.